And I would like to take a motion to adjourn our called meeting.
Some more.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor by raised hand. Meeting is now adjourned. And it is 5:32, and now we will call our regularly scheduled board meeting for June 12th, 2024 to order. And I want to thank all of y'all that are here in the room with us today, as well as those that are viewing us online. So, Madam Superintendent, get us going.
Thank you, sir. With that said, the next item on the agenda and how we want to start our meeting is I want to invite Reverend Scott Mathis forward to say the invocation. If everyone would stand and then stay or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Darren, my Father, we just thank you so much for this beautiful day you've given us, God. And we thank you for the opportunity to come to you in prayer. God, how awesome it is that you listen and you answer our prayer when we pray to you. Thank you for the many blessings that you pour out on each and every one of us every day. God, help us all to show your goodness to everyone that we come in contact with each and every day, to do our best to live for you every day. God, I thank you for this school system, blessed to be a part of it, God. Thank you for everyone gathered here this evening. I pray for each of our board members this evening, God, that you would just bless them with the wisdom and the knowledge, God, to make the decisions that they need to make, God. I pray for our teachers and our staff and all of our precious students, God, that you've allowed us to be a part of their lives. We will be quick to give you all the praise, honor, and glory, God, for you alone are worthy. We thank you most of all for Jesus, in his name I pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. You'll remain seated while Deputy Tony Seriana comes forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to approve the consent agenda. Ms. Collins, if you'll pull the minutes up for us, please, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a rec-- oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, we had a couple of call meetings. Sorry. Thank you, and that's three sets of minutes, regular meeting, two call meetings. And, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make that recommendation to approve as presented.
Do I have a motion?
You have a motion.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
You have a second.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor by raised hand. It is unanimous.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, for the next item on the agenda, I'm excited to invite Dr. Ramsey down to brag on some students that were recognized as a positive athlete. Dr. Ramsey?
Good evening, Madam Superintendent and Board. It is an absolute honor to be here to talk about these next three students. One of them wasn't able to be with us. But first, I want to call up Kaylee Gaddis. Kaylee was chosen as, for Flag Football, as the District Positive Athlete of the Year. That is a tremendous honor, because not only does that mean she's an athlete, it means she's also a great teammate. It means that she also inspires her team to do better, to be better. She's positive with everyone she deals with, and it's voted on from across the district. So, we're extremely proud of Kaylee for her selection as the District Positive Athlete of the Year in Flag Football. Now, I'm going to call up Mr. Brady Smith. You see him look at me, he's missed me this summer. So, Brady was also chosen as the District Positive Athlete of the Year. And, again, all those same things I said about Kaylee apply to Brady. But then, okay, and this is huge, guys, because this is our first one. Brady was chosen as the State Positive Athlete of the Year. From all across the state of Georgia, he was picked as one of the top Positive Athletes of the Year. And, you know, if you don't feel positive when you see Brad-- every day when you walk into school, you know, Brady will lift you up. But he also does that with his team. He does that with the people he competes against. So, you know, this is one of those things where we call up champions when we've been region championships and state championships and different things like that. But, guys, this talks about not only what you do, it talks about the kind of person you are. So, could not be more proud of Brady for winning the State Positive Athlete of the Year. So, let that sink in a minute, state level. And we also had another district winner, that's Logan Sosby, and he couldn't be here tonight. But very proud of all three of these athletes for not only participating in athletics, but representing Fannin County in such a positive way. So, I want to congratulate Kaylee for her district win and congratulate Brady for his district and state win. So, let's give them one more round of applause. And it's my school happenings presentations, so nobody leave. Usually after this is over, everybody leaves, everybody stays.
It's 36 flag long. Mr. Chair, now we get to recognize some middle school science fair winners, and I'd like to invite forward Ms. Althea Gobble and Tori Art. Tori wasn't able to make it. Ms. Keisha's going to help them out.
Good evening, Ms. Diller, good evening, Board. I get the opportunity to get to introduce some of the hardest working kids around and incredible teachers and also community members. And so, we are so proud of them. I know that I will shortchange them on all the things that they've accomplished. So, I'm going to let Ms. Gobble talk about the specifics, but if you guys will come on up and join us. Yes, so at the end, they can go back there with their.
Oh, okay. Which ones is? All right, Johnny, you want to get it? And I'll leave it yours.
Perfect. So, I'm going to let Ms. Gobble tell you a little bit about what awesome accomplishments these guys achieved this year. We're also going to give a special shout out to Dr. Lyons, one of our community partners. And then, of course, Ms. Althea Gobble and Ms. Tori Art. Again, we're super proud of them. So, Ms. Art, you'll tell them.
Oh, I'm sorry. These guys made a highlight for my last year for year number 30, and it was wonderful to have them. It was the best group ever. And we started working on this when? August, August of 2023. And they started there, developed in a plan, and they done it, understood and researched how to do scientific investigation in the real way, and they did phenomenal. I want you to tell Melinda a little bit about yours, and then I'll teach you. Okay?
So, mine is about if there is correlation between type of vegetation and stream bank stability. So, I used two different tests. So, I did two different tests, and with those tests, I was testing three different types of vegetation to see which one supports a stream bank the best. So, I was testing grass, shrubs, and trees. And with my two tests, I figured out that shrubs were the best at keeping a bank stable. And so, if we ever need to improve the stability of our bank, then we could plant trees, and that would help keep the bank together.
Yeah, because your hypothesis you found was none.
Yeah, my hypothesis was that shrubs would improve the stability of a bank the best, but it was incorrect because trees did.
And so, she got to do that research and look at it, and she saw that needed a little more data. She got to get back into additional tests, and Dr. Lyons really helped with that. And what was your second test, your second test?
So, my second test was the-- it was pretty much a test to figure out, like, how many types of different types of vegetation there were in a specific area. And the lower the number of the outcome was, the better, because I wanted a lower amount of different types of vegetation, because that would mean that my site choosing was more accurate, because I wanted there to be in each site just shrubs and just grass and just trees, so that I knew that there weren't outliers in the data of different types of plants.
Which did what with your hypothesis?
So, it actually changed it, because in the shrubs, there were lots of patches of grass that could have affected what my outcome was for my test to figure out, like, what the stability of the bank was. So, I think if I were to do this again, I would definitely use the second test that I did to figure out if my sites were actually accurate before I did my first test.
And the two streams that they studied, you only did Mineral Springs, right? And Mineral Springs and Weaver Creek are on very kind of middle school property. And those one that we do have trout, and they raised trout in the classroom this year, and they got to stop those creeks, those rainbow trout. So, we hope that continues, because the goal is Mineral Springs needs some restoration, because it has some severe erosion, which will push out in the trout and stay there, because there is a lot of taking away on the creek banks and too much grass, not enough trees, not enough shade. So, that's part of her thing, and she was able to prove that, that if you had some more trees, you had some more stability, some root systems along the bank, you wouldn't have the erosion. All right? How about you guys?
So, our project was the stream flow increased dissolved oxygen. And we wanted to see if we could see if there was a correlation between dissolved oxygen and stream flow. So, we tested the two creeks, which was Mineral Springs and Weaver Creek, and whatever.
Why did you pick the two stocks, two different ones?
Because even though they ran into the same waterway, we could test and see that since they both ran into the waterway, what effect did they both had?
The Weaver Creek was the better stock, than Mineral Springs.
Yes, ma'am. And so, we tested by using-- it's a more advanced scientific-- how would you say it? It's a technology. And we wanted to see this as this technology, because it would be useful, because it's accurate, and it could give us proper readings and data that would actually--
The veneer.
The veneer, yes, ma'am. And we could use this and see if our data was correct and compare it to other, you know, science projects that have been similar to ours.
Where did you start?
So, because we use these advanced technology, we could get more advanced readings, which would help us.
What did you find?
Well, we found that our-- that if our stream flow was increased, it would lower temperature, increase dissolved oxygen, and increase biochemical oxygen demand.
I wanted to read that.
And the biochemical oxygen demand is what our macroinvertebrates and bacteria use for nutrients.
And how does Mineral Springs compare to Weaver Creek?
So, we found that our riffle, which was on Mineral Springs, had an increased amount of stream flow, which helped our-- it's a better ecosystem for our trout.
And so, do you remember your awards that you got? I guess so. So, you start, tell us the awards that y'all got.
So, we actually were awarded with the Thermos Fisher-- how do you say it? Thermofisher Junior Scientific. And that gave us the opportunity to go compete in DC as, you know, as a group and present our project. And this is so from state, it would be out from regional, state, and they would hand these out, the awards out, and that could give you the opportunity to go to DC.
Is that the only award?
No, we also had one first place in our category, not overall. And was there one more?
Of those two, top 10%?
Yeah, top 10%.
And handed to Ally, Ally, what was your one?
So, I won, I think I won three. I got third place in my category. I got one from the Association of Women Geoscientists. And I got another one that was like, it was really long, but it was something about, like, providing a potential answer for, like, worldwide problems, like, yeah, that's--
It was a really long talk.
Yeah. And they are all sixth graders, so incredible courage, we're so proud of them.
Wave the pink on the flag. They're award winners.
Mr. Chair, Board, everyone, we have some smart kids, some wonderful kids, some that just exemplifies what it means to be positive, good citizens, intelligent. We're blessed, we are blessed.
And also public speakers.
They are public speakers, impromptu public speakers, very proud of them. So, Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is school happenings, Dr. Ramsey. All joking aside, I've teased him about his presentation. It is amazing at what has happened at the high school in half a year. So, thank you, Dr. Ramsey.
It really is, and I love the opportunity to come up here and talk about the high school. But, you know, tonight, I'm speaking, Dr. Roof's speaking, and Mr. Drury's speaking, so settle in. It's going to be a while. So, we'll start off with this, talking about some of the academic accomplishments this year for the high school. Two years ago, well, last spring, we started the Impact Center, and this was twofold. This was to help kids who were behind in their credits, but also allow kids to maximize their dual enrollment credits. Both ends of the spectrum there, as far as what they're trying to accomplish from a graduation standpoint. To date, since last spring, we've had 35 graduates graduate out of the Impact Center. That is an incredible feat, and we're very proud of them. 250 credits were earned in '23, '24 from the kids taking part in the Impact Center, so very proud of them as we move forward. And then I will look at our preliminary score reports from our EOCs. This is, these are our state tests. And the things I want to point out here, you know, we want to continue to grow. We want to continue to get better. We want to make sure that we're moving in the right direction. But if you look at these, you will see a growth in every category in the proficient and distinguished category, okay? Now, if you look at, you know, the developing on up, you want to start at the beginning, but if you look at the developing on up, we're in that 80% range. But if you look, our US history grew in the proficient, and it grew in the percent distinguished. Our American Lit had tremendous growth in the proficient and distinguished, and then in biology, again, growth in the proficient and distinguished. So, very, very proud of the work that our teachers and students are putting in to make those test scores go up. Now, look, it's not all about test scores, but we do want to make sure that our kids are being successful and accomplishing what they need to accomplish. And then a big one here, 6% growth in students who are reading above grade level, okay? And that's one of, that's kind of a district initiative to get kids reading and getting to home grade level and above grade level. So, growth for us of 6% in that, so very excited about that and very proud of the work that our teachers and students put in. We won't have our algebra scores until around September, so we don't know how those went yet. But I anticipate that those numbers will be similar. We started a program called Progress Learning, and that is a way to benchmark students and tell where they're at with their standards. Because if, you know, when you're teaching, if you get to the end of a standard and a student hasn't mastered that standard and you just keep going, it's kind of a snowball effect. You know, they don't get the next one, or the next one, or the next one. So, this allows us to benchmark and see where each student's at on those standards, so they can get the proper instruction moving forward if they need the remediation, if they need extra tutoring, we can give them that to get them up to standard, get them up to level on that standard. And then dual enrollment, I'm just so proud of our kids on this, okay? In '23, FY '23, you can see that our students earned 232 college credits. And that's a lot, right? And that saves mom and dad a lot of money. But this year, our students earned 437 college credits. Guys, that's incredible. I mean, our kids are really taking advantage of this opportunity that they have to earn high school credits and college credits, so they can leave high school with 30 college credits. So, they've got a tremendous head start on that, and again, they've saved a lot of money. I don't know the exact, but it's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars that they're earning by not having to pay to go to college.
Does that not speak to the elementary and the middle school improving?
Absolutely, yeah. Hey, look, if they, if the elementary schools and middle schools not doing the job they're doing, we can't do the job we're doing. So, I mean, it truly is, you know, we're all in it together from the day they walk in the doors till the day they walk across the field. So, yeah, yeah, that speaks to what they're doing as well, absolutely. And then CTA, just some highlights from there. We have a CTA night, but I do, where Mr. Henson and Dr. Roof talk about CTA. But I want to go ahead and hit some of the highlights, some of the things that they get to do, some of the things that our CTA kids have accomplished. And you can see right there, and I'm, you know, I'm not going to read, because Mr. Darren will throw batteries if I go too long, so I'm not going to read everything to you. But I want you to look down there toward the bottom and see 211 pathway completers, 228 earned school or industry certifications, and then look at that bottom number. If they complete a pathway, they have a 99.4% graduation rate. So, if we can get them into that CTA program, we can get them completing those pathways, they're going to graduate. That's kind of the hook, right? Because if they're in that CTA program, they're doing something they're interested in. They're doing something that's going to lead them into their career, into the next phase of their life. So, by doing that, they're going to stick with it, and they're going to hang in there, and they're going to graduate high school, and that opens up every other door for them. So, that's big, and that's a number that we're very proud of, is that 99.4. And then you can hear, this just kind of breaks it down for you here, as, you know, each one, the different pathways that were completed in the '23 and '24, fall and spring, how many pathway completers we had, how many industry certifications and EOP tests were passed. And you can see, again, that the numbers are really high, and they're leaving there with a certification that gets their foot in the door for their career and what they're going to do next. So, great job there. And then this is the prom. You know, our people work so hard to put on a good prom, and I'm always so proud of our kids, the way they act at the prom. This prom was pretty unique. You can see, yeah, that guy is up there, he's twirling fire, he breathes fire, he did all kind of stuff with fire. We had him as magician there, we had all kind of stuff going on. And I did not put that picture on this side in there, I'm not sure how that got in there. But, yeah, I dressed as the ringmaster to announce the king and queen and prince and princess, so that was exciting. They did not let me keep the outfit, though, I had to give it back. And, you know, as you look here, you know, what do you see? You see kids smiling, you see kids having fun. And while we do, you know, our job is to educate, most important thing we do is to keep them safe, but at the end of the day, they're kids, and we want to be able to have some fun, too. And they had a lot of fun at this. Nice little note there, our Ferris wheel up there at the top, our welding construction class has made that. And then we sold it. After prom, somebody paid $1,000 for it to come and get it, so that went back into those programs. So, they may have a little side hustle there to make some money for their program, but that was pretty unique that they were able to make that and put that out there. And this is our fine arts. You know, we have so many good things and so many good programs going on in Fannin County, and we have some tremendously talented artists, and you can see the different things they've been involved in. You know, they're painting, when you talk about collaboration, they're painting the backdrops for our spring musical up there. I don't know how many, I know, I saw several of you at the STEAM Festival downtown, where we did different things. And then you can see there that our art club painted a mural for the fire department. We donated handmade bracelets for our breast cancer patients. And then the Youth Art Month up there at the top, you know, we had multiple kids who participated in that, and their artwork was displayed at that. So, very proud of them. And then, as, you know, the drama that I just spoke of, this was our spring musical, and I'm always so impressed with these kids, they're so talented. You know, they can get up there and act, they can get up there and sing and do things that I could never do, at least nobody would ever want me to do. And so, I'm always very impressed with them and their ability to do that. And this year, we had Beauty and the Beast, and had a great turnout. Everybody, a lot of people came each night to watch our kids perform, so very proud of them for that. And then band, and I, we honored, we honored our band, I think at the last meeting we had, but I wanted to get this stuff in here and talk about it again, just so I had the opportunity to say bass trombone instead of bash trombone. It was last time I said bash. Now, in fairness to me, they're both spelled the same, but I've caught a lot of grief for saying bash last time. So, as we go through this, and, you know, that's Blake Colley, and we honored them last time, but this just kind of gives some of the accomplishments of our band. And then here they are, and as you can see, Scott Perkins has the bass trombone, and Derek Green plays the bass clarinet, so I've corrected that. And then athletics, we honored these girls earlier, but as you know, in only their second year, they finished third in state in Palm and sixth in state in Jazz. So, very proud of them and the work they're putting in to build this program as quickly as they have. And we have one of the stars of our dance team here tonight. Do you want to demonstrate or anything, kind of add to my presentation? Okay, and then continuing on, things that have happened since I presented last time. Boys and girls basketball, both made the state playoffs, girls made it to the Sweet 16. We had the Region Player of the Year for the girls in Courtney Davis. And then you can see there, we had other kids that made the first team all-region, Ben Block and Jordan Richardson for the boys, and Macy Hawkins and Reese Lewis for the girls, with Colton, Kayla, and Cole Gril will get an honorable mention. And then wrestling, our wrestling team made it through to the sectionals, and we had Blake Summers, who was the state runner-up in the 120-pound, and Landon Poole was top eight in the state for 126 pounds. So, very proud of those young men and the work they put in. Our wrestling team last year graduated a lot of kids, so to come back as young as they were and have the accomplishments they did, that speaks a lot to the hard work that was put into that program, so very proud of them. And then golf, you know, we're building golf. We were able to have both boys and girls golf team this year, so very excited about that. We've got some work to do on the skills, but, you know, but they're trying, and they're working hard. And that's the first step, being able to have a team each year and build on that. So, very proud of those young men and women who came out and competed, and they got better as the year went on as well. And we're very thankful to Olds Co. Farms for letting us use the course out there. That's great of them. And then weightlifting, again, we honored our weightlifting team at one of our-- And then weightlifting, again, we honored our weightlifting team at one of our meetings, but just wanted to again point out that, you know, and this is for the state, okay? GHSA doesn't do weightlifting, this is GACA, but it's the only weightlifting competition or the organization that sponsors weightlifting competition. So this is going against the best of the best, just like it is in GHSA. So you had state champions Carson Callahan, Sam McGill, Cooper Born, and Case Holloway, and then runner-up Braden Taylor and Lawson Sullivan. Third place was Jacob Green, fourth place Bryson Cole and Turner Michael, and then fifth place Baron Davenport, CJ Reese, and Baylor Twigs, and then Isaac Watkins finished sixth. Every kid we took finished in the top six, at least. So that's very impressive, and a lot of hard work going into that as well. And then soccer, we had both boys and girls teams advance to the Sweet 16, and had multiple players get selected for All-Region. You can see those names there, won't read them to you. And then Coach Jessen was selected as the co-coach of the year for the region. And this kind of, we kind of came into this year with, again, young, not a lot of seniors, not a lot of people returning with, and so to be able to accomplish, you know, what they accomplished and not only make it to the state playoffs, but advance in the state playoffs, again, very proud of the coaches and players for putting that work in and getting to that point. And then tennis, our girls were the region runner-up and made the state playoffs and advanced in the state playoffs. And we had, again, you know, some girls selected, Annabeth Monier and Izzy Jabley for the All-Region team, and then Hunter Satterfield for the boys All-Region. And then our baseball team, baseball team, again, made it to the state playoffs, and when you get to the state playoffs, it's a best-of-three series. And our baseball team went down and took the nationally ranked team, not state-ranked, nationally ranked team to three games. Only game they lost all year, and our boys got it. And we were, we were right there with them till late in the third game. We thought we were going to shock the world with that one, but very proud of the work that they put in. And then track and field, okay. We've got a lot here. Our girls finished fourth in the state out of 43 teams. And again, just extremely impressive. But, as you know, track is a little bit different. You have a team score, but you also have individuals. So we had our girls win the state. Right? I mean, that's, that's extremely impressive, because these kids are going out there and they're competing against the best of the best, and they're going out there and winning. And then you had Lindsay Holloway finish as state runner-up. You had Carly Sams finish third in state, Ava Acker fourth in state. Girls four-by-four meter relay team finished 10th in state. Zachariah Prater finished state runner-up in the 3200, and then Cooper Born finished third in the state in the discus. Cooper was also one of our state champions in wrestling, or in weightlifting. And then we had several athletes who were region champs, and you can see there, Lindsay Holloway, Carly Holloway, Ava Acker, Carly Sams, Zachariah Prater, Braxton Cheatham, Lawson Sullivan, and Brody Angel were all region champs. So, a lot of successes, and we'll bring them in to be recognized at a board meeting in August when everybody kind of gets back into school and we've got everybody here. And then, as you just met, our folks earlier who did this, and again, you know, this is just one of those things where this says a lot about these young men and women who accomplish these things. So Brady, Logan, and Kaylee were selected as the region winners, and then, as you know, Brady was selected as the state winner. And again, can't say enough about that. That's our first state winner, so very, very proud of him. And then some things about what our kids are going to do next. We had Courtney Davis, who has signed to play basketball, Young Harris, she's going to be close, so we can all go watch her some. Zachariah Prater is going to Charleston Southern to run. He will continue his cross-country and track career at Charleston Southern, so very excited for him. Brody Pascal will go play football at Point University. And this one is very impressive, this is Michael Stevens. Michael Stevens is going to play at Life University Men's Volleyball, and we don't even have men's volleyball here. He got hooked up with it. He started helping Coach Age as a manager for girls volleyball, and then he started going to showcases, and he started playing on some travel teams and doing different stuff like that, and got a college scholarship. So he is a living testament that where there's a will, there's a way. Because we got a kid who's going to play college volleyball, and he's coming from a place that didn't even have that sport at his high school. So very proud of him. And then this is something we started this year, and I am extremely proud of this. We started having signings for our young men and women who are going into the US military. You know, like I talked about in my graduation speech, there's so much honor and so much courage involved with these young men and women who are going on to defend the way of life that we hold so dear and the rights that we enjoy. So we wanted to recognize them, so we started letting them wear their military sashes that they're given, and we wanted to have a signing where we, you know, we brought, Bobby was there, you know, we're getting them in the paper, we're getting them some recognition, because, you know, if anything deserves recognition, it's that and what these young men and women are going to do. And then we also did the same thing with our educators. We thought it would be good to recognize our replacements, because these are the young, no guys up here, but these are, these are the young women who have, have one, completed the pathway for future educators and have committed to go on and pursue. Now, this is not the only one. I mean, as you, you know, as you saw at graduation, Sidney Chancy is going into education, so there are others going into education, just like there are others going into the military, but they didn't have anything finalized at that time when we did this. So these are the young ladies that are going into education. And then this is our Special Olympics. You know, it's always so exciting when they go off and they compete, and they come back, and they always come to my office to show me their medals, because they're so proud of what they've accomplished and what they've done, and it's just awesome to get to watch these. And this young man up here in the corner, his name is Cooper. And Cooper, when Cooper's at home sick, he will call me. He will call my office to let me know that he is home sick and to ask me if I've changed the bells yet, because he hates the way our bells sound, he wants the bells to sound. He has called me this summer to ask me about the bells. So Cooper keeps me on my toes, but just very excited for these guys and what they get to do and accomplish, and so that's just an awesome thing. Scholarship night, I know a lot of you were there and got to see, but on scholarship night alone, there was over $1 million worth of scholarships awarded to our kids. Says a lot for the work that they're putting in, the work that our teachers are doing with these kids, but, and it speaks tremendously about the generosity of, you know, obviously they're getting them from colleges and places like that, but they're also, a lot of those are coming from local organizations and local people, so a lot of generosity in our community as well. And then our awards ceremony, 165 students received awards at our awards ceremony. So again, that just speaks to the work that's going in. In our community, I know a lot of you were at this, and, you know, we live in a great And this, this tells us it's going to be okay for a long time to come, because this event that you see going on right here, and this is bingo, and this is for, to benefit the wholesome back in AIDS family, who, you know, we know about the losses that they suffered, very close together. And this was all started by three young ladies. So that tells you that, and we're going to, Ms. Dillard and I have talked, we're going to bring them to recognize them as well. They want to come to this one, but every one of them are on vacation this week. But they started this along with a bake sale. There's a rule in bingo about how much prizes you can offer. So we had to go to a raffle after that, because we far exceeded the amount of prizes due to the generosity of the community and what they donated. In total, because of these three young ladies and the generosity of the community, they raised over $15,000. And that was halved between the wholesome back in AIDS family, and it was delivered to them this past week by these three young ladies. So, so very proud of these three young ladies in our community. We had a bake sale at school, $2,300 at a bake sale at a high school was what they raised. There were kids that were going in there and just buying stuff and then taking it and giving it away, because they just wanted to participate, they wanted to be a part of it, they wanted to buy something and contribute to what was going on because of how, you know, just the love that's in our community and the love that's in our school. So, you know, just can't say enough about, and you'll get to meet them hopefully at the August board meeting. And then this year, we started the Rebel Olympics. This is the brainchild of Brittany Stennett, and this was a field day. This is the first time we've had a field day at the high school, at least that I know of. And as you can see there, there is a lot of excitement going on as these kids are competing against each other in the different events. And it wasn't just athletic events, there was like trivia and different things like that, and it was set up all throughout the school and the different, and then we even had to make some last-minute adjustments because the weather was not good that day. But at the end of the day, the freshmen won the competition, so they were excited. Now, this was, this was the first year of it, so the seniors were probably still a little bit too cool to take part in it, but the freshmen were there and hammering, so they were excited, and they won the inaugural Rebel Olympics championship. And our senior trip this year, we did a little something different. Our seniors got to go on an overnight trip. They went to Splash Country, and then they went to Dollywood up in Pigeon Forge. I think Ms. Cosse got to accompany them on that trip, because her husband was our administrative champignon on that trip, and I think they got to ride some of the rides and got a little bit wet from time. But our kids were very excited about this and getting to stay overnight and kind of adding to that senior trip and then what they got to do, because it is really the, kind of their last hurrah and what they get to do from that standpoint. And then, you know, this, this is what it's all about. And while we're on this slide, I want to say, I want to thank our elementary schools and our middle school for the graduate walk, because our kids absolutely love that. We were practicing on that Thursday. We practiced inside on Wednesday of that week, and we practiced outside on Thursday of that week. And for some reason, on Thursday, when we were practicing outside, the marching was just whipping their tail. I mean, they were eight yards apart, they were four yards apart, they were, so I made them go back and do it again. And they were all, okay, but we're not going to miss the graduate walks, are we? We got to get there. So that's just something that they really enjoy. They enjoy getting to go back to their elementary schools, and they enjoy getting to go back to the middle school. So very appreciative of that, and it kind of, what Mr. Dewey said earlier, it really shows that it truly is a district-wide thing, because, you know, they're just as excited about going back and taking part in the, in those as well. And then, just one more thing, our audio enhancement, you talked about the security earlier, we've got, and I didn't put a slide, but I did want to say, that has been tremendous for us, not only the safety component, but just the instructional component with the teachers, you know, being able to use that microphone and not having to project their voice so much, and then being able to record their lessons, so if kids are out, they can watch that lesson at home. They could watch it live if they wanted to. So there's, you know, that's a tremendous asset to our schools, and Scott Mathis has done a great job overseeing that, and any time, anytime we've had any kind of issues where he's been right on it, so that's been something that's really gone great. And that's all I have. Any questions?
I've got a comment.
Yes, sir.
Behind every one of those activities, we think of teachers standing in the classroom speaking. Behind, behind every one of those is a teacher somewhere that's supporting that and spending their time doing it.
Absolutely. You are correct.
Dr. Ramsey, I'd speak to the quality of your dual enrollment AP program. My daughter wanted to be a pharmacist, so she, there's strong presence of chemistry, and she completed the AP chemistry class at Fannin High School. She said, Dad, I'm going to go back and take it anyway, even though they exempted it, because I want to have a thorough background. And after the class was over, and she attended every class, after it was over, she said she could have stayed home the entire class and made 100, because every, everything that was on that test at University of Georgia was covered at Fannin County High School. Certainly speaks highly to the quality of your program.
It does, it does. Thank you.
Dr. Enzi, you and your staff is appreciated for all that you do, and you all have gone through a lot together this year, and each step of the way, y'all stepped up and held each other up, and you have led the way, and I appreciate you and each of them for what they've done, not just for their students, but for each other.
Thank you, thank you very much. And thank y'all for staying.
All right, Mr. Chair, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Danner, do we have any public comments, sir?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. All right, then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, school governance team update.
So I guess no one wants to hear the SGT update. Oh, well, all right. So, board members, audience, I wasn't here for the May board meeting, so now you get to hear me for, for agenda items in a row, so I apologize ahead of time. But I do want to say, and I know Dr. Ramsey mentioned it in his presentation, where I was there at the, at the track meet, I can say that I know Mrs. Colless, and I prayed ahead of time that if some of those kids had the opportunity to win a state championship, that they would let God get the glory. And so, when, in track, when you get an opportunity to win a state championship, you're interviewed. There's a, there's a company called Mile Split, you're interviewed, hundreds, some of the interviews, I mean, even close to 1,000 people will watch those interviews, and our girls that won that four-by-800-meter relay championship on the interview, they were so selfless to give all the people thanks that needed to, but more importantly than anything, they gave, they gave our good Lord the glory for their ability and everything that they did. And I just felt so honored to be a proud, you know, to be a part of the school system to have kids that do that. Because I can tell you, you watch the rest of those videos, it wasn't like that. And so, we're, we have good kids, and we have a good community, and we have people that are just showering the right kind of stuff over these kids, and I'm just glad to be a part of it. Here with SGT, Blue Ridge Elementary School, they did have some notable work, no fundraisers, no field trip, no facility use, did discuss changes to the handbook, discussed results from the self-assessment, talked about goals and action steps for the, for this year and for the upcoming school year, and talked about new members, and also new, new meeting dates. So once we have all that finalized for all the schools, we will post, we'll have a document that we will give to the board members as well, so that you can see the meeting dates and all the new members. East Fannin, no fundraiser, no field trip, no facility use, however, they did make changes, talked about changes to the handbook, discussed charter funds, and discussed the appointed SGT members. West Fannin had some fundraiser requests noted there, and then also some notable work, discussed Acadience data. SGT members received a copy of the school improvement plan, they discussed that, and Title I, how they're going to use their charter funds, and self-assessment, and also their new SGT positions, and also their code of conduct they discussed, and reviewed STEM and Sting. Fannin County Middle School also had some fundraiser requests noted there, no field trip, and then also a facility use request. Notable work. There we have changes to the handbook and comprehensive needs assessment and self-assessment and charter system. Moving on. The high school, we had, as usual, lots of fundraiser requests, no field trip requests here, no facility use. Mrs. York provided an athletic update, and chamber partners, oh, sorry, chamber advertising partnerships were discussed, and then also the SGT elections and the new members were discussed, and the self-assessment results were also discussed. And again, as usual, just a reminder that all of the minutes of the meetings are housed at the individual schools.
Thank you, Dr. Roof. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to approve the collaborative operating agreement with MEC, or Mountain Education Center.
And I'm going to read this six-page, six-page document verbatim, just kidding, really not. This is just a continuation of the partnership that we have with MEC to continue to do business with MEC as we've, as we've done for the, for the previous school year. So with that said, we, you know, and of course, you gentlemen had the opportunity to read this ahead of time as well, and we do humbly ask for your approval for this item.
Thank you. With that said, Mr. Chair, make your recommendation.
With that said, Mr. Chair, make your recommendation to the previously presented.
Do we have a recommendation? Do I have a motion?
You have a motion, sir.
I have a second. I have a second. Is there any discussion? I would like to say that that MEC program is vital and being part of that, it's, my wife being part of that used in that, I've seen the culture of that, how it works. And I'm very thankful for the numbers of the Impact Center, but I would, as they might say, stringlessly encourage that we continue to partner with those. And I know they're moving to the high school and they're moving out of a place they've been 12 years that they adequate room to facilitate the people that otherwise would not have the education. And I'm thankful for the four, it was four, and it's graduating, but that's a big deal because that does include we are Fannin. So with that, any other discussion?
I'd like to say something else that you said that by moving it to the high school, Dr. Ramsey's actually worked for MEC for quite a while before he became principal. Now with Ms. Vicki, if we put them in the same space and we collaborate with the Impact Center and what the high school can do with what MEC can do, I expect our numbers are going to soar even more, especially under those two's leadership.
All in favor, by a raised hand. It is unanimous.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, approve the FY25 Perkins Five Comprehensive Local Needs Assessment and Local Application. Dr. Roof?
That's enough right there, isn't it? That's a lot of words. This is something that, as the CTAE director, I am required to go over at a board meeting. Of course, I have some in the room that say, I always say that, it's required, but it really is, it's required. We do have to, the DOE does want us to make sure that we present the goals, the action steps, and how we got to those goals and action steps for this plan. So what this is, better way of saying it, it's our Perkins Five Plan. And so what this does is it allows us to spend that federal money coming down from Perkins on our CTAE program. So if we don't write it into this plan, we're not allowed to spend money on it. I can tell you that most of our Perkins money goes directly to the kids, whether it be for travel to CTSO events, equipment in the labs, supplies, so on and so forth. So that's what we try to do is to make sure we write this plan so that we can continue to spend those funds directly for the kids in those CTAE programs. So the way that the CLNA, the way that this works, that's your comprehensive local needs assessment, were rated on several categories or indicators. And so those are our summary there. We have our core indicators of performance, we were rated operational there, labor market alignment, exemplary, size, scope, and quality, operational, career pathway programs of study, exemplary, recruitment, retention, and professional development, emerging. I can explain that one in a little bit. And then equity and access, operational. So everywhere, we're exactly where we want to be, except for that one that said emerging. So here, just a rundown of the core indicators of performance because we received, we received the operational status because we met in seven out of 10 of those areas that are listed there. Labor market alignment, our CTAE program does a phenomenal job of aligning to current industry demands and needs. And so this is why we receive that exemplary for labor market alignment. Size, scope, and quality, the only reason that we receive an operational instead of exemplary is that not all of our pathways and career clusters have the following characteristics. And this is kind of tricky, and I know I bring this up every year. We have some pathways such as STEM and information technology that even though they're in demand across the state, they're not in demand locally. So because of that, one little, that one little minute detail, which I wish the state would fix, we have to be considered operational instead of exemplary, even though we know for a fact, we need those pathways absolutely because we have kids that need to be in those pathways. So that's that. Karen, moving on. Career pathway programs of study, we received exemplary status because we meet all the criteria to have that exemplary status there, which we've listed. I'm not going to read all those verbatim, but getting exemplary status there is, that's exactly where we want to be. Recruitment, retention, and professional development. So this one is, again, kind of tricky because we did get that emerging because only 85% to 90% of our CTAE teachers have been in their current role for at least three years. I can say that most of those new teachers are not due to other teachers, you know, it's not due to people choosing to leave the program. It's teachers that are retiring or it's due to pathway growth where we're having to have new teachers brought in. So that's why we're receiving that emerging in that category. To get it operational or exemplary, you have to have teachers that have been there for many, many years and most of them be there. So it's kind of a catch 22. That's one of those tricky ones as well. And so then, you know, looking at that CLNA, then you create the SMART goals. Again, I'm not necessarily going to read these verbatim, but Goal One for our plan has to do with providing the students with entrepreneurship opportunities within all the CTAE courses and pathways. And then also what came up at our meeting that we had with all of our industry partners was the concept of financial literacy. So they really want us to embed financial literacy into all of our pathways and so we're going to make a point to do that. So that's part of this goal here as well. And so we have action steps for that goal. Action Step One is going to be to continue to use an entrepreneurship framework in our classes. Action Step Two is to ensure that our classrooms have the lab equipment that they need and so that we can, again, meet that goal. Action Step Three was to ensure that all of our teachers have the opportunity to obtain professional learning opportunities. Action Step Four is to allow, again, those students to participate in those CTSO competitions. So again, that's like your FFA, your HOSA, TSA, so on and so forth. And then Action Step Five is to continue to meet with all of our local business partners to better the programs for our students. Second goal of the program, again, has to do similar to last year. You have to look at somewhere where you have to have some data that you can lock onto. And here is to continue to try to increase that female non-traditional program concentration percentage. So we want to try to increase that by 3%. And then also to increase our students with disabilities, the ELA math, science, and all those academic proficiency rates. So I'll say two things there. One thing, when you're talking about non-traditional program enrollment, that's talking about, you know, getting students plugged in into programs, it's not typical. So we've had that happen, though. We've had some girls that have been extremely successful in welding. We've had some boys that have been extremely successful in nursing. Those are considered non-traditional, but we want to continue to try to improve that percentage. And then the second thing there, we brought in Annette Putnam as our CTI teacher and she works with students with disabilities in all of our CTAE programs. And she has done a phenomenal job of bringing more students with disabilities into the CTAE program than ever before, which is exactly what we need. Now, we have to get to that point to where she can help lock in and start improving some of those academic, some of the academic proficiency rates for those kids that are in those programs. And I know that, not just her, but I know that the entire high school will continue to work on that and better that there. Action Step One, again, focusing on those CTSOs, making sure that those kids get that opportunity, and then recruitment strategies for those. And also Action Step Two, again, to participate in those CTSOs. Action Step Three, like I just talked about, continue to use our career and technical instruction teacher, that's Ms. Putnam I was just talking about, continue to use her services to better the lives of our students with disabilities inside the CTAE programs. And then Action Step Four, professional learning for our teachers. And then Action Step Five, add more individuals with disabilities and individuals from non-traditional job sectors to our advisory committees and stakeholder meetings, essentially having opportunities for more role models there for our kids. And that is the entire Perkins Five Plan. I know that y'all had a fun time listening to that and it was a blast, wasn't it? It wasn't as fun as Dr. Ramsey's presentation and I apologize. But that is the plan, those are our goals and action steps. And like I said, we try to make it to where we know that we will be able to spend the funds where we need to spend them directly for our kids. So with that said, again, humbly ask for your approval of that Perkins Five Plan.
Thank you, Dr. Roof.
What are the disabilities? What's the definition of those disabilities?
I mean, that could be, you know, any child within the confines of special education, special education program. So any...
Just wheelchair.
Correct. Correct. Not just, not, it doesn't have to be a physical disability. It could be, again, any student that's inside the confines of special education, special education program.
Thank you, Dr. Roof. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Would we have a recommendation? Do I have a motion?
So may I. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, by a raised hand. It is unanimous.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is FY25 Career Technical and Agriculture Education, better known as CTAE, federal and state grants. Dr. Roof?
Y'all are going to love this one. Trust me. Trust me. One slide. One slide. So here, I am required, you don't have to approve anything here, but I am required to, at a board meeting, to show the different CTAE, federal and state grants that we've applied for, for the upcoming school year. And so here, we have applied for and will receive the funds from the following grants: apprenticeship, ag extended day, ag extended year, ag young farmer, extended day, supervision, Perkins Five Plus Reserve, Perkins Five Program Improvement, and Perkins Five Professional Development. So again, nothing to approve, just has to be displayed.
Thank you, sir. Right. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda, central office update, and I'd like to invite Director of Student Services, Dr. Connie Huff Ford, to talk about the GROW program, please. Thank you, Dr. Huff.
If I could, before I talk about the GROW program, I'd like to speak to Mr. Dewey's question because what I'm going to talk about ties in perfectly, Mr. Dewey, with what you were asking. To be a student in special education, there are 13 disability eligibility categories. And that can be that you have a physical disability or it can be that you have a cognitive disability. Now, some of the most common ones that we have are called specific learning disability, which means you might have trouble in the area of math or you might have trouble in the area of reading or written expression. A lot of those students, you don't necessarily realize that they have any sort of disability at all. We also have a lot of students who fall in the category of what we call OHI, for other health impairment. And it might be that they have such severe ADHD, it's hard to get their minds to slow down enough to do what we need them to do at school. And like I said, there are 13 categories. Those are two of the most common. So yes, sometimes you will see students who have wheelchairs and because of their physical disabilities, or you might see someone out in our community with their autistic child and it's very evident that they have a disability that they're dealing with. But a lot of what we see with our students with disabilities isn't that it's necessarily a disability that you can see because our students all have strengths and we just put those IEPs and other things like that in place to help them in those areas that they struggle in, which ties in perfectly with what I've got up here on the screen today. It might be summertime, but we still have kids coming around the schools, doing some things, making sure their skills are sharp. We have some kids at our, some elementary and middle school kids at the middle school this summer doing what we call ESY for Extended School Year. And just last week, we had a crew at the high school doing what we call the GROW Academy. And now GROW is something that we do in partnership with CTI that Dr. Roof just mentioned a little bit about and what we call VOG Rehab. Now, both of those are state agencies whose primary focus is to make sure that anybody with a disability, whether it's cognitive or physical, is able to go out into the world and have the most beautiful, wonderful life that they can. They are helping us to help those students to get ready for the world of work. And GROW was a week-long program where we had 22 students who of their own free will came every day to attend our program. Now, we were fortunate enough that we had four local educators who headed up our endeavor and were our GROW sponsors. Ms. Annette Putnam was one, Hope Sowers was another, and Nancy Jessen. And then also a local but not working in our system was Ms. Angela Ustrey. Now, these ladies did an awesome job of helping these little kiddos talk about what their options are for that world beyond school. They were talking about being real-world ready and working on those employability skills because we all know that soft skills are some of the things that sometimes kids struggle a little bit with. And they need that extra practice to make sure they know how to apply those in the right circumstances. I had gotten to go up on the first day, the Monday that they started, and they had our partners from UCBI in there, Mr. Corey and Ms. Sherry presenting on financial literacy. So we're looking to hit them with that every chance we can because, you know, kids think as long as you've got a debit card, you've got money to burn. So, you know, we've got to help them with that and so that they can see that sometimes what their working abilities are going to line up with might not match what their spending prerogatives are. So we had them in there, we had Ms. Deb Cantrell from the Rural Georgia Agency, talking about some real-world scenarios with them and helping them work through what they should do in those situations. We got to take them out on a field trip one day. And then at the end of the week, I hear they had quite a nice graduation ceremony with some celebratory dancing going on. But this is just one of the options that we are working on to make sure that our students have what it takes for the world beyond school because that's what it's all about, making sure they have beautiful lives. Questions for me?
The IEPs, is that where you find these?
An IEP is the document that a teacher writes for a student who has a disability. And it just outlines what we need to do for that student to help them to be successful at school.
Thank you, Dr. Huff. So well done and thank you for the work of you and your team. Right. Next up is Chief Operations Officer Darren Daner with the update on safety training. Mr. Daner?
Ms. Koss had a picture up on the screen, just got one picture. This is Fannin County Sheriff's Office, Fannin County Fire Department, Fannin County EMS, Blue Ridge Police Department, Fannin County School System. This was a two-day active shooter training at the middle school this year. Sheriff's office puts this on. We got to play with our audio enhancement, watching people running down the hall with our little buttons on, and it was truly amazing. So again, we got a great relationship with the sheriff's office and the PD and EMS as well. So again, they help us keep our kids safe. So again, I was remiss not to put this in the board.
Thank you. Thank you for highlighting the effort. It takes, it does take the community to help keep our kids safe, so thank you for that. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to approve district financial report. Ms. Wynn?
Good evening again, Superintendent, Board. So we have our April 30th, 2024 financial report for our general fund and we are at 83.33% complete for our fiscal year. Shows our revenues and expenditures, encumbrances. And then we can, we have our capital projects for the same time. for the same time period, and then we can move on to our special revenues is next, and that's school nutrition. There's special revenues. Then our school nutrition, and that is our financial reports for April.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a recommendation to approve as presented.
I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
That's so much easier to read, but thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor, by a raised hand. It is unanimous.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is to approve the FY2024 budget amendment. Ms. Nguyen?
So we have just a couple of small little amendments that, so this is our Second Amendment with our general fund, and we can kind of scroll down, there's not any changes in the revenues. We have just a change between functions, and then a reduction in transfers out, which that is a pre-K reduction, where we had scheduled to go into pre-K, and then we can keep going with our special revenues, and we had already done First Amendment with those, but our Second Amendment is always with pre-K. We had extra money that pre-K decided to give us at the last minute before school got out, so that's those adjustments with our pre-K budget.
Excellent. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Chair, make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Would we have a recommendation? Do I have a motion?
You have.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, by a raised hand. It is unanimous.
Thank you. Next item, this is sploßed update. Ms. Nguyen?
And we have our sploßed update that we received in May for the month of April, and if we could blow that, I did not bring my sticky note up here, so if we could go that a little higher. We received $824,098.77. It was 5% growth. Our average for 37 months is still $833,000. We're still on track to complete the sploß in September 2024.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item on the agenda is to approve spending resolution for July 2024. Ms. Nguyen?
So this is requesting a spending resolution, so whereas the Fannin County Board of Education, for good and sufficient reason, we do not have a budget ready to adopt by June 30 that covers July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. And in order to serve the public, we request authorizing the superintendent to continue to expend funds to continue operations. And then the resolution says, therefore, be it resolved that the Fannin County Board of Education, the superintendent may expend funds for all funds for the month of July 2024, not to exceed 1/12 of the final amended budget for all funds for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2024, plus debt services, which we don't have any, thank the Lord, and capital expenditures known to be due in July.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Or do I have a motion?
So moved.
You have a second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, by a raised hand. It is unanimous.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to approve the FY2025 tentative budget for advertisement. Ms. Nguyen, this is what you talked about earlier in our call meeting.
Yes, ma'am. So this is the budget that I'm requesting permission for you to approve to advertise in the newspaper, and then it's the same as those three snapshots that we went over in the public budget meeting. And then, as you go down at the bottom of our, it says, "This budget or revision of this budget will be considered for final adoption by the Board of Education at 5:30 PM on August 8 of 2024." And so what we will do is advertise this, because you have to advertise it, we've had to have two public budget meetings, and then on August 8, that will give us time to get updates from the Tax Assessor's Office and updates on other numbers, and I will go in and make those changes in general fund. And then, in that meeting in August 8, I'll explain the differences between our advertised budget and our budget that's ready to be voted on for request approval for adoption.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, by a raised hand. It is unanimous.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is facilities update. Mr. Danner? Can you give us a second? Facilities and construction update, please, sir.
Yes, ma'am. First off, maintenance department, as of yesterday, 1,919 work orders completed since July 1 of last year. So we joked about it today, we're going to get 81 more work orders in before the end of the month to break the 2,000, so that's coming. What's there on the screen? That is a property that was purchased, the new property purchased on May 25 of 2021, 154 and some change acres. Of course, high school's just to the west of that. Go ahead, Ms. Collis. And then, soon after that, on June 9 of 2022, another 66 acres was purchased. I know it says 50, but notice, well, 50 of that was in the city at the time, 16 was in the county, so the total is 66.689. Then the next frame, Ms. Collis. So again, that's 66 acres adjoining the 154 up there and change. Ms. Collis? So, this is where the excitement comes. Tuesday, next Tuesday, here at this office, actually next door, Bonin Watson is going to have a public bid opening. This has been put out to bid to the subcontractors. So again, they will, again, it's going to be here at 2:00 AM, 2:00 PM. So again, that is going to be the start of a GMP process. We can't just add up all the stuff that we get there, because then they want to take that back and start compiling a GMP. So again, what you see on your screen, this is a condensed version that Mr. Harbison and Bobby put in the paper for several months ago. Bottom left, of course, is new tennis courts. The next building just north of that, that is our athletic annex, baseball, softball complex, hitting facility just south of the baseball and softball field. Again, that's baseball, softball, we can do golf in there as well, we can actually do tennis in there. That's going to get a little interesting, but we can do tennis. And then, of course, a press box there, a press box. Go ahead, Ms. Collis. So again, here's a better view of that facility, where everything is located at. Of course, Dr. Ramsey's, the green field, it's got the Rebels on it, that's our football field just to the east of your campus. 13 there is going to be extended parking, four courses parking, three baseball, five is softball, seven, which is dark, that's the hitting facility. Number two is the press box, six, of course, is parking, eight is the annex, nine is the parking for the annex, 12 and 13 is hopefully going to be our next phase as soon as we get started on this, our CTAE. We designed that whole area to save that. That little bump at the bottom down there, that is the creek. Go ahead, Ms. Collis. So this is a better view, or not a better view, this is a more overall view. That's everything that you just seen there. To the left, that little gray that goes down to the left, about where the emblem is up there, the Fannin County emblem, that is Bill Holt Chevrolet. Think of that area being Bill Holt Chevrolet. So again, that's part of that 66 acres that's on there. So again, we, we're not going to do this now, but in, hopefully in the very near future, at a road, then the grayed out area to the bottom left, grayed out area to the right, we can do whatever we want to do there. So again, we have preserved as much property as we can. Go ahead, Ms. Collis. Again, here is one of the bid documents that went out to contractors. That document is absolutely huge. But again, what you see, again, the green, right, of course, that is waterways, there's a branch up there, and then all those little dash line, that's the buffer that you have to stay away from. Again, the road that's going to connect at the far north of the drawing, it'll go all the way to Industrial Boulevard. Of course, the football field, we can use that existing visitor parking lot. Some of that parking lot has to be taken down to help balance all the dirt that has to be moved. But again, that's more of a overall drawing that you can see, again, that we're going to start getting some prices on Tuesday. Here are just some 3D renderings. This is if you are at the driver's license place over there, roughly looking back towards the high school, that's sort of a view there. What really, you can't really see here is where the football field is up to the right, out of view. The dark grayed out area, that's current high school. Of course, there is going to come off that embankment there, but where the press box is, the elevation of that plaza is at 1720, and the actual baseball and softball fields are at 1705. So that plaza's going to be up high, of course, all concreted, then the bleachers actually go down, looking down into the baseball and softball field. Of course, that's the hitting facility there to the left. Ms. Collis? Again, a different view, so if you're at the old gym, looking sort of down, up in that area, if you're coming out of the business wing, old gym, in that little area, lights looking down, again, there you can sort of see the elevation of the fields and the plaza and that sort of thing. And just for record, the football field is at 1725. Go ahead, Ms. Collis. Again, different view, again, at the DMV elevated, so, you know, we got a drone, or we're in a helicopter, whatever, taking a picture of it. Again, that's that same view where everything's going to be located at. Go ahead, Ms. Collis. Again, this, if you are in the press box at the football stadium, looking back out to where everything's located at. So again, that'll be a somewhat of a view of where things are going to be located at. Ms. Collis? All right, here's the multi-purpose annex building. Again, it is two stories. The very bottom, if you come out of the old gym, the big curve with the greenhouse, used to be at the high school, that door is going to be on the property side. The top right picture, that is if you was at the creek, looking back up to that building, that'll be that view. But again, it is a two-story building. Go ahead, Ms. Collis. And then here's the four plans for that building. The top picture is the upstairs. What you see upstairs are retractable bleachers on the right and left. In the center, notice you can see those two little circles, that's two wrestling mats, so wrestling events will be held in that facility. So during the school day, if wrestling's not going on, the mats, you know, get stacked up, put dead center there, bleachers roll back in, and notice sort of in the background there, you see a basketball, basketball paint with a three-point line. Again, we threw that in there because, number one, we had the space. This is not going to be dedicated for basketball, Ryan Chastain. I hope Ryan is listening, I hope Ryan sees this. This was designed for, we now got the old gym, once we get wrestling out of there, we got the new gym. Again, this could be used during the school day for adaptive PE. You know, there's 100 things that this could be used for. This could be used during the day if we get ROTC. ROTC could go on during the day. So again, it's going to be, the upstairs is going to be a multi-use facility. Downstairs is not going to be multi-use, but it's going to be multiple people use. All downstairs is pretty much just going to be a weight room, period. We went through several coaches, ADs and APs and principals and whoever else we could talk, and students. Students made a huge point. What's in the center there that is lined off, that looks like a football field, this is not a weight room for football. The alignment is just for measurement. You got a yard, and then you got five yards, and you got 10 yards. Again, it could be used by a lot of things. We can divide it either in thirds or halves, or not halves, you can divide it either into one-third or two-thirds, to where if we've got 30 girls in our, we got the basketball girls in there, we got the football team in there, we drop a curtain, they can be isolated. So, you know, number one, the girls don't make fun of the boys because of how weak the boys are. I mean, that's why we put that in there, because the boys get picked on a lot for their weakness and weight training, wink, wink. But anyway, go ahead, Ms. Collis. So here's just a, all right, go, and I'll leave it there. Weight equipment, this is just one-half of it. Again, that is turf, and then rubber floor, and of course, if you've ever been into a gym, if you don't put the rubber floor in there, number one, for noise, number two, you're going to bust the concrete. So again, that's just a snapshot area of it. Go ahead, Ms. Collis. So this shows you the size of that facility. Right now, our current weight room at the high school is 1,450 square feet. This facility, this weight room, is a minimum of 7,400 square feet. And while I say minimum, that little jetted-out area up there, that's where we're going to put some auxiliary, some, you know, whether it be a treadmill or for injury type thing, we got Mr. King involved in this. So again, a minimum of 7,400 square feet. That is 20 racks, as opposed where we've got six racks in a very small area now. This is a press box view. So if I'm at the, if I park at the football stadium and I walk down towards the baseball or the softball field, the bottom left is what you're going to see. So again, you can go through that little area, onto the plaza, baseball be to the left, softball be to the right, top right or middle right, again, that's if I'm at the hitting facility, looking back up. So again, that's there. Ms. Collis? Then there's the, you know, there's a sample for plan of what's going to go into that press box. Baseball, softball has its own concessions, baseball, softball has its own press box, that sort of thing. Go ahead, Ms. Collis. Hitting facility, again, that's what the hitting facility's going to be like, that is a pre-engineered metal building, got brick fuscade on the outside, again, for appearance. Ms. Collis? And then the inside of the hitting facility, it's three indoor batting cages, whether it be softball or baseball or softball. Each cage can be raised individually, or, you know, all three of them can be raised, so we can pitch in there, you can, of course, you can hit. And then notice there in the center, even though it says three golf, we could actually put nine golf stations in there. You know, you can do 3D virtual type stuff. Actually, I have to give Coach Stone the credit on this, when he first said, he said, "Hey, can we move the golf to either side or the other?" And I say, "This is just a sample." Then he's the one that sent me the little device that you can put on your cell phone and put down there, and you can hit the golf ball. It tells you whether or not your club is either open or closed, tells you what your swing speed is and all that type of stuff. And, but of course, he's terrible at golf, so he won't say it as well. And so we've got two locker rooms and everything else as well. I think that's it, Ms. Collis. Nope. And then just one more, that's just the overall view of that property. And again, that is not all the property, that is just a sample of what's coming down the pike. The existing tennis courts are still there. That's what looks like a little Y coming down to the right, that is existing tennis courts. People's asked, "So what are you going to do with it?" I said, "I want to leave them," because we've talked about it, multiple schools have talked about it, as big as pickleball is getting in the nation, it will be, we're anticipating pickleball will be a GHSA event or a sport within the next five years. So we do have that there, so we've actually got eight, nine, 10, we got 12 tennis courts currently, once this gets completed.
Okay, Mr. Danner, I'm going to ask Ms. Collis to go back to Slide 5, please.
Slide 5.
That's the one I want, we have, that's the one that's numbered. For the guaranteed maximum price, the GMP, just so everyone is clear, will you point out the ones that will be on this first proposal, the guaranteed maximum price, because it won't include the new CTAE building? So make sure that everybody's clear on that.
That is correct. What will be included on this, on this project is the road from the old tennis court parking lot up there by the technology center, that road, the black, 10 and 11, 9, 8, 6, 5, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 13. So take out 12 and 13, everything else will, you know, we're, hopefully, we're going to move dirt one time. We're going to save as much money as we can, but reserve that 12 and 13, all those trees that's there now, yes, they're going to be leveled, and we're going to have a pad built for the CTAE very next. a pad built for the CTE very next, hopefully, the very next project that we do, or one of the very soon next project. Yes, sir.
How much of that is local tax money?
How much of the...
Right now, what we're planning on doing, Mr. DeWes, and that was going to be my next question to Mr. Danner, is we do a SPOSS budget, and so we have allocated a certain percentage of the SPOSS that we anticipate coming in over time to be able to pay as we go on this facility. So right now, it would be SPOSS, a hundred percent SPOSS. Now, that is if we continue to get revenue at the anticipated average rate that we've been doing, like Ms. Wynn tells us every month. The, I about forgot what I was going to say.
GMP.
Yeah, GMP for that, another thing that, kind of like what my mom always said, if you, we shot the moon on the S, so I told Mr. Danner, I said, with each option that the architect would give us, we went with the best option, or we shot the moon, so to speak. And like the bleachers, so I went back to there and I said, okay, let's look at this. If the GMP was to come in, that would be astronomical, and that wouldn't afford us to be able to keep up with an appropriate rate or whatever, then we would come back to the table with the architects and see if anything had to be modified. So I don't want anybody seeing these preliminary plans prior to the GMP being approved, because there may have to be some, there will be negotiations between there always is, and so that's the process there. So this is like shooting the moon, best case, what we want.
What is not on this screen is there should be a fourteen, which is right underneath thirteen. Thirteen was original, there, I'm sorry, there you go, go ahead, Jenny, screw it on down. Ten and eleven, it is on there. Okay, so again, ten and eleven is also on this, as well, I think I said that. And to answer your question, Mr. DeWes, SPOSS five is, we're still collecting SPOSS five? So we've not even started SPOSS, collecting SPOSS six yet, which has already been approved. So hopefully, what we're going to do is we'll deplete five, building this, we will tap into six to complete this, and then six will keep on collecting.
And hopefully, well, if we do it right after we do this, we'll have seven and six left to start that next project. And also, where all the black is on the road, one of the things that we know that we need to know that we have the land to do it, while they're building the road, we asked them to do a five to six feet level berm on the side, so that they can buffer, excuse me, do a cross-country, I mean, yeah, cross-country track and utilize the land that way as well.
Miss Collis, go to three, I think it is.
How much of the hundred and fifty original Neil property is...
Mr. DeWes, I knew you was going to ask me that, I've got that ready for you. I knew you was going to ask something like that. What we're building, go back, Miss Collis, to five? No, keep going? Yes, five. So pretty much, the best guess, but I can give you of that hundred and fifty-four plus sixty-six, so two hundred and ten acres, we are using roughly about twenty-three acres. From number four up there to pretty much the old tennis courts, just trying to do a rough sketch, it's between twenty-two and twenty-three acres. I knew you was going to ask me something like that, I was ready for you, I was ready for you. Yes, sir.
I'm very pleased to see the twelve and thirteen projects on that map, because it's vitally important, we could save a lot of money, with the grading process is exemplified right here, when we started building the transportation facility, we realized that we could save almost two million dollars by going ahead and allowing them to prepare the ground for this facility, rather than moving all that heavy equipment and then bringing it back in, it's significant savings.
Very true, and since you brought that up, Mr., I can't even, I can't see anymore. I'm sorry, Mr. Bramlett. The TECOR property, this property was purchased on August the eighth of two thousand and nineteen. You know, we, it fell into our lap, you know, we all know that. And then we actually signed the GMP on these two facilities on January the twenty-first of two thousand and twenty-one. And then, again, by the grace of God, we got the Neil property on May twenty-fifth of twenty-one. So I mean, it's just, again, you know, give God the credit. Give God the credit.
All righty.
Can we go ahead and approve this, so we can get started?
Need a GMP there, Mr. Danner.
So since we are having that bid opening Tuesday, again, we, the first thing they have to do is, you know, they could have a contract come in and just lowball something. And again, so if they lowball something, what they will do is they will vet that contract, you know, hey, can you do this for this amount? If there's no way, of course, that will get throughout and everything else. So they'll have to vet every bid that put in. Once that happens, and once the architect puts his stamp on it, because we've already told the architect, we want pro-turf, that's what we want for our fields, the athletic fields. We told them, we want William strength for our weight equipment. So he puts all that together between Bronn Associates and Bonin Watson. I'm hoping to have the GMP the following week. So that's, the bid opening is on the...
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, which means the week of the twenty-fourth, we could have a GMP. I'm going to beg, backflip, turn, whatever I need to do to have a call board meeting, so we can get going. But we can also wait till the July board meeting.
Mr. Danner and I, he keeps looking at, because we've had a discussion, we're going to get a GMP where we want it first.
And that's why I don't have a tie on, I said, Ms. Dillard, do I have to wear a tie tonight? She says, is that an orange one? She says, no. And I said, okay, so I'm not wearing a tie, so that's why I don't have my Tennessee tie on that, so. I seen your, I see it, Mr., I see it, Mr. Bramlett.
All right. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Danner, and thank you for all your work with this. Number nineteen is to approve district student code of conduct, and this is an annual obligation. And Mr. Drury, the new transportation director and dean of students is going to... Maybe that, yes, sir.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Dillard. Yeah, we are required each year to get your approval on our student code of conduct for the next school year, so we're already getting ready for twenty-four, twenty-five. Just a couple of things, when we prepare this, or make sure we have our student conduct correct, Gail, the Georgia Association of Educational Leader, gives us a checklist, we double-check that, and then we also go by Georgia Code twenty-two-seven-five-one-point-five, which gives us the requirements that we have to have in our code of conduct. And we've got everything we need in there. And actually, the code of conduct from last year, we only really had to change about four or five words, we needed to add something. I believe as we scroll down, it's on page three, you'll see it highlighted. But I just want to make sure, you know, that we very much vet our code of conduct, to make sure we have everything included. In there, you have the authority of the principal, authority of teachers, our progressive discipline procedures, we go through behaviors which can result in disciplinary with procedures, and on that page is where we added a few words there to make sure we're keeping our students safe.
What are those words?
We included, this was on the recommendation of Mr. Jimmy Stokes, he is the head of Gail's disciplinary institute, and he recommended that we add CBD with or without THC. I don't know if you know this or not, but if you talk to law enforcement, one of the things they're seeing in schools is gummy bears, that are not regular gummy bears, and legalities have prevented schools from pursuing some disciplinary actions, because they did not have THC in it, so we had, because of all the synthetic things that are out there now, we had to add those words, with or without THC, to make sure we can keep our students safe. We also have in there about bus behavior, disruptive presence, and then towards the end, we have definitions of terms, so people can make sure, of course, a lot of times, the, you know, legal terms can get a little bit confusing. We have our statement about unsafe schools, which is, again, that's one of the state requirements, student support processes, and parental involvement. And what we will do this year, everything will be electronic this year. Our code of conduct is the same for all our schools, as well as the district, is part of, will be part of all of our schools' handbooks. Parents and students will be asked to read the student code of conduct within the handbook and to sign off on that, that they have read it and understood it. We will also have hard copies in our media centers, front offices and classrooms, so if somebody does want a hard copy, it will be ready for them to be, you know, made available to them. So as many ways we can get it out there for people to have access, we will.
So the change is the highlighted change.
Just a few words of adding those words on page three. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. With that, Mr. Chair, make a recommendation to approve as presented.
Would you have a motion?
You do have a motion.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion?
All in favor, by a raised hand. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, y'all have a blessed evening.
Next item on the agenda is to approve school nutrition meal prices for school year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, Ms. Williams, and that could get a little confusion, but you're going to do an excellent job explaining it.
I always get the really good confusing things. Good evening, everyone. So last month, we had an exciting board meeting where you all approved CEP, and our students do receive free breakfast and free lunch next year. So what we have today to approve is the nutrition prices for second meals and for adult meals, because I am required by law to make sure that we are not using any of our federal or state funding to supplement those meal costs. And so the number that that writes, I can read this all through if you would like for me to, but again, this all goes back to compliance. And so the codes that I'm referencing are in the document that is displayed at the above. Again, price recommendations will be nothing, no cost, no charge for the first breakfast or first lunch for any student. And adult breakfast and second breakfast would be two seventy-five, and adult lunch and second lunch would be five fifty. And those go into the actual cost of the food that we are paying right now, which is still continuing to rise. Do y'all have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Williams, and again, I thank you for your work in making those first two lines happen with those zeros for kiddos.
Oh, it's exciting, it definitely is.
With that, Mr. Chair, make a recommendation to approve as presented.
I would like to make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor, by a raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda is executive session, I'd like to request executive session for personnel, please.
Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So move.
Has a motion and a second? Who is the second?
I'll second it. I'll second it.
All in favor, by a raised hand? We'll be right back.
Thank you, Ms. Dawson. Mr. Danner, will you join us?
May I have a motion to resume our board meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, by raised hand? It is unanimous. No action was taken while in executive session. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the executive session on May 9, 2024?
You have that motion?
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
You have a second, sir.
A motion and a second, all in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is personnel. So if everyone will go to their personnel sheets. The first is the rescension. She was offered a position but then declined the opportunity, and that is Kayla Howard. It was for school year 2024-2025. Mr. Chair, make that recommendation.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
For a second.
You have a second.
Thank you, sir. All in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. Next two are resignations. First one is Jimmy Green, effective 531, 2024. Mr. Chair, make that recommendation.
I'll make that motion. Do it have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor by raised hand? It's unanimous.
Next resignation is Marilyn Rivera, effective 65, 2024. Mr. Chair, make that recommendation.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second. Thank you. All in favor by raised hand? It's unanimous.
Thank you. Next set of recommendations are pending completion of paperwork, background check, and training requirements, and if it's okay, I'll take the professional staff collectively. Okay, that is, and these are all effective school year 2024-2025. Professional staff: Katie Exum, Kristen Franklin, Elizabeth Gibson, Hannah Langkow, and Brianna Wallace. Mr. Chair, make that recommendation.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor by raised hand? Thank you. It is unanimous.
Thank you. Next one is also pending paperwork, background check, and training requirements. It's classified position, effective 617, 2024, and that is Tommy Leffert. Mr. Chair, make that recommendation.
I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. Next two I'll take collectively unless there's an objective. Both classified, both for school year 2024-2025, and that is Kelly Collins and Heather Davis. Mr. Chair, make that recommendation.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous.
This next one is professional staff, school year 2024-2025, and it's pending completion of paperwork, background check, training requirements, and official release from current contract. And that is Erin Painter. Mr. Chair, make that recommendation.
Do I have a motion?
You have a motion.
Is there a second?
You have a second.
Motion and a second, all in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. Next are all substitute employees, and all of these will be pending completion of paperwork, background check, and training requirements. The first one is Matthew Abernathy for substitute custodian, effective 617, 2024. Mr. Chair, make that recommendation.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. This next set is substitute teacher, all school year 2024-2025, and I'd like to take this set collectively unless there's an objection. Okay, Sean Butler, Sheila N. Fowler, Carly Holloway, John Lavin, Leslie Lindsay, Samantha Richards, Tanya Callahan, Susan Mandy Dixon, Angela Paris, Carla Smedley, Holly Vaquero, Lorraine Wright, and Donna Yates. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. I'd like to take this next set collectively. All substitute nutrition for school year 2024-2025, if there's not any objections. Kendra Cash, Holly Isley, Heather Segal, Stephanie Wilcox, and Ariel Ray. Mr. Chair, I make that recommendation.
I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. This next set of recommendations is the student work program, and this is pending completion of paperwork and all school program requirements. Mr. Chair, these are all for 61, 2024 through 531, 2025. I'd like to take them collectively if there's not an objection. That's Castle Barnett, Emma Buchanan, and Trent Davis. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make that recommendation.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
You have a second.
Motion is second, all in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, and I will take the next recommendation. The board has been pleased with Shannon Dillard's work as our superintendent, and based on the results of her current evaluation, as well as her performance during the past year, the board approves one additional year for her for a three-year contract to begin July 1, 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor by raised hand? It is unanimous.
Thank you. Next item is superintendent's comments. With that, I will say thank you, and I am honored and humbled to serve the people of Fanning County, and I could not be more blessed to serve with the people I do on this leadership team in our school buildings, the teachers, and our classified staff. I would be remiss not to highlight everyone that works in the school buildings. That's where the real work happens. Here, we just clear the runway so they can do their jobs, and I'm again humbled and honored to serve, and I'll continue to pray to let the Lord bleed, and I request prayer from everyone up there because we may know what to do sometimes but not have the courage to do it. So we'll just pray for a little bit of courage every once in a while for me. I'd appreciate it. Graduation. Dr. Ramsey, I appreciate you, and you were the one that started honoring elementary principals and teachers for the culmination of a lot of years of hard work, and it was a glorious evening. The good Lord smiled. I was nervous all day. I just knew it was going to rain, but I should have known better, and then the skies parted, and it was absolutely beautiful. Special recognitions. To have three students that are recognized for their character and dignity and integrity for how they act on the field and in sports is huge, especially this day and time, and so I am honored to be a part of this community. Our science fair winners, they're smarter than I am. Very proud of those kids. Susan, thank you for your budget presentation and for all the work that you've done. And we have a special recognition tonight. All of this team works very hard. This lovely lady in her department was in crunch time and worked willingly, chose to make sure that CEP and school events and procurement for food, which I didn't know was so hard, but it is hard, happened. So with that said, Ms. Martha, if you would come forward, please, and Darren and Lucas, if you'll come help me. Board, let's recognize Ms. Martha Williams with an owl, and there's also an owl for your two, if you can have two right hands, which you do, Rhonda Anderson and Kelly Gonzalez, who I knew couldn't be with us tonight. She's passionate crunches a whole lot of numbers and don't let us get by with anything. The issue is work. The expert is happy. Fresh fruits and vegetables supplemental program approved for the elementary. So very proud of your work. Thank you. With that said, Mr. Chair, I'm going to hush a minute.
Mr. Beard?
Me first, huh? I appreciate everybody that came out, seen him, and appreciate all the, what do you call them? Principals. Principals. Principals, you know. I've had several of them going through the school, but anyhow, I appreciate all the principals. Appreciate our SRO for being here. here, you know, the thing that we started out doing at the first of our meeting, recognize all of our children who have accomplished, that's what it's all about to me, seeing our children do what they can do best, it excites me to see that, Dr. Ramsey, presentation was good, presentation was good, and I appreciate you, Dr. Huff, I'll tell you what, you just hit the spot, you just jumped up there and answered Lewis's question and went right in, you know, and yeah, you know what, that's what this system's all about, everybody working together, doing the things that they need to do, and accomplishing what we need to accomplish, children first, right, Lewis?
Kids first.
Kids first, we are Fannin, and I appreciate you.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Ms. Williams, thank you for your continued financial leadership, your work is excellent, we appreciate you, Ms. Williams, I continue to get positive comments about your work on the community eligibility provision, phenomenal, and thank you so much, Dr. Ramsey, congratulations on the progress as you highlighted tonight, we all know that performance is measured from where we start to where we finish, and nobody does it better than Fannin County, very proud of you, Dr. Roof, CTAE is flourishing, and the planning and the paperwork required to qualify to use those grants is extensive, so thank you, thank you very much for facilitating that, it's exciting to watch the progress, Dr. Huff, thank you for your compassionate work, we appreciate you as well, it's an honor to serve, thank y'all.
Mr. Dewey?
I'm glad our new board members to be are well enough financially to not take pay for their monthly pay for the service on the school board, it makes me proud to know that they care that way.
Mr. Gallaudet?
Say thank you to everyone that come out tonight, I appreciate everyone that's here, that's listening, all the presentations, I couldn't put one above the other, one thing that stood out to me, I guess, I don't know what they would call it or not, was what Dr. Roof said, to be a part of your athletes and to hear them give glory and honor to God for something means more to me than anything, I don't, not that I would ever downgrade anything that our school system ever does, I am proud of everything that they do, but to have our students publicly announce that they honor God Almighty, that means more to me than anything, if all my years are sitting here on this board, that's the most, that's the best compliment I have ever heard, and I appreciate you bringing that out, that says volumes about our students and about our community, and I am absolutely honored and privileged to be a part of that, so thank you, love y'all and God bless y'all.
Well, I'd like to say the congratulations to Luke, who's gonna be heading out tomorrow for Paris Island, I got to shake his hand as he came across for graduation, and I happened to be down there two weeks ago, and I warned him, we had a Fannin County one coming through again, but I'm excited because he'll be leaving tomorrow, but what he don't know is he gonna sleep for two days till he puts his feet on those yellow lines and starts his adventure, so it was such an honor, and it's emotional for me, to see young men carrying that on, I am proud to be a Marine, and I'm excited for him, and he's not doing it for any glory, I said, did you do all the preparations so you could get promoted, and he says, what? It was too short a time for me to try to help him, so I'm still honored that he, for y'all that don't know, oh three eleven, he's gonna be a grunt, he's gonna be pounding ground everywhere he goes, and carrying rifles and packs, and he's excited about that, so I'm excited, I plan on in September heading down there and watch that graduation because it's an awesome experience, and since I brought up graduation, did you see the honored grads that we have, that, yes ma'am, they do, that was so awesome, we have so many, and it's amazing to see how many sashes, how many cords that are around their neck and the accomplishments that they've done, and that just means we have good teachers that are investing in them, and because I get to sit in on some of the CTAE and, I lose my acronyms there, but there's a group, we had welders and automotive, and the girl, it's a girl that's the president, that's exciting, she's leading a bunch of guys up there in the vocational building, and they're doing astronomical things that y'all really don't get to see, and I'm so excited about our kids, Ms. Keisha, it's the first time I've got to see you here, see, but you and Ms. Althea, great job, I still see you like the little girl you was when I'd go to your dad's parts store, you know, and I'm proud of the young woman that you have come, and the great smile you bring every single day, and I happened to be in a delegate session this past week, a hundred, I believe it was a hundred and seven delegates from GSBA across the state, and we're voting on some things that be, that will help us in legislation, and things we'd like to see done, but while I was there, you know, it's a big ordeal, I've been a part of the Republican Party, I don't know if I'm supposed to say that, but I have, as a delegate since fourteen, so I was a little up on that when a young lady asked me, what do we do as a delegate, because she saw my delegate badge, and so I began to explain to her what we were gonna do, and she said, well, I'm just over a year into my board seat, but the board members there, they don't really help me, and I'm thankful to these guys, when I came home, they didn't treat me like an outsider, and they helped me, it's a big deal to me, and it does make me emotional, because I know their heart, even when I'm, if I mess up, they don't call, they help me, that's what Fannin is, and with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor by raised hand? Thank you, we are adjourned.